Just as I am without one plea, but that thy blood was shed for me and that thou bid me come to thee, O Lamb of God, I come. I come. Just as I am and waiting not to read my soul of one dark blood to thee whose blood can cleanse each spot. O Lamb of God, I come. Just as I am, thou wilt receive, wilt welcome par, done cleanse relief because thy promise I believe. O Lamb of God, I come. Just as I am, thy love unknown has broken every barrier down. Now to be thine, yeah, thine alone. O Lamb of God, I come. I come. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Lord, we thank you, Lord Jesus. Lord God, you are God, Jesus. There is none like you, Lord, none like you, Lord Jesus. Just as we are, Lord God, you accept us, Lord God. You ransomed us, you redeemed us, Lord God. You continue to work through and in us, O God. And Lord, we pray that you will help us, Lord Jesus, to just minister your words to our hearts, Lord Jesus, and to our lives, Lord God. As you continue to redeem us, Jesus, we thank you, O Lamb of God, Lord, I come. I come, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Our scripture reading will be taken from Psalms 118 and we will read from verse 1 to 8. Psalm 118. Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good; his love endures forever. Let Israel say, his love endures forever. Let the house of Aaron say, his love endures forever. Let those who fear the Lord say, his love endures forever. When hard-pressed I cried to the Lord, he brought me into a spacious place. The Lord is with me; I will not be afraid. What can mere mortals do to me? The Lord is with me; he is my helper. I look in triumph on my enemies. If and last, it is better to take refuge in the Lord than to trust in humans. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. It is better to take refuge in the Lord than to trust in humans. Humans are failure. We are at best weak. But we serve a true and living God whose love endures forever. I just want you to think about that for a little bit. We have family members who love us and sometimes situation comes up and it's hard for them to accept. And sometimes their love gets waned. But we serve a God that when we mess up, we can still go to him. We can repent and he will continue to love us. He promises to never leave, to never forsake us. Hallelujah, oh, what a God we serve. Oh, what a God we serve. Hallelujah, hallelujah. We will now take the prayer requests. Are there any prayer requests? Well, I'll... Let us pray. God of love, God of all comfort and all peace, a peace that passes all understanding. Lord, we come to you on behalf of that young lady who, Lord, is going through a time of depression, who, Lord, probably when she looks around her, she feels so alone in this world. But Lord, we know that you promised to never leave or forsake. And your word says you are close to the broken-hearted and to those who are crushed in spirit. So we pray for an upliftment in her spirit right now, Lord God. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you will encamp round about her wherever she is right now, God, and you will hold her so close that she can feel your very presence, O heavenly Father. Lord, we know that life is hard and things come at us every day. But Lord, you are greater than all our problems. You are greater than anything that can come at her. I pray, O heavenly Father, that she will be reminded of that, Lord God, even in this moment. Lord, I pray that you will roll back the curtains of memories, Lord God, remind her of times, Lord God, that you have been with her. Lord, I pray that you will provide help for her during this difficult time, Lord God. Someone who can speak to her from a professional perspective as well, God, and to help her and to remind her of who you are. Lord, we put her before you in a special way right now, God. We pray for others around us who may be going through similar situations, but they are unable to give voice to what they feel. Lord, we put them before you. Lord, we come against every thought of suicide, even right now, for anyone who may be at that place, Lord God, that they feel like life has given up on them, Lord God. Let them be reminded that you are a God that never gives up. Be with them, O God. Comfort their hearts. Raise up people around them, Lord God, who will be examples of you that they will see the light of you in them. Lord, comfort their hearts, comfort their minds, O heavenly Father. Lord, we pray for those who are mourning the loss of family members. We put the Hamilton family before you in a special way. Lord, we put my friend Simone and her family before you in a special way. Lord, I put my friend Maxine before you in a special way. Lord, there's so much that they are going through, Lord God. There are so many memories. Lord, I pray that you will be with them, that you will comfort them. Lord, I pray that you will show up in tangible ways in their lives. Lord, I pray that friends and family will not only be around for a moment, Lord God, but that they will give continuous support. And as we continue to pray their strength, Lord God, we pray that you will uplift them. Lord, we pray for our studies that we're about to delve into as we finish off with this portion of your word, Lord God. We pray that you will touch Reverend Gibbs, Lord God, that as she opens her mouth, your words will flow from her lips, that the words of her mouth and the meditation of her heart will be acceptable to you, O God. Lord, we pray for receptive hearts. Jesus. We pray that we will be the good soil that the seeds fall and grow and that we will continue to flourish in you and not take this for granted, that it's just another Bible study. But we will apply what we have learned over the weeks, Lord God, to our lives, that we will make changes, Lord God, that we will examine ourselves, take the shells from our eyes, O God, so we can truly see ourselves and to apply your word to where we have fallen short. Lord, we give you thanks for your word that we're about to receive. In your name we pray. Amen, amen. And so now I'll hand over to our presenter, Reverend Gibbs.
Hallelujah, praise the Lord. It's the good use of the Lord, amen, amen, hallelujah. There's a song to sing this evening before we go into this study. And I'm gonna ask as well a song to read, the golden text for us, Galatians, chapter 5. As we just sing this song, "Learning to Lean", "Learning to Lean on Jesus", amen. Finding more power than I've ever dreamed. Learning to lean on Jesus. Hallelujah, we wanna sing that song this evening. Learning to lean, learning. I'm learning to lean on Jesus. Finding more power than I've ever dreamed. I'm learning to lean on Jesus. You know, this study that we are doing on the fruit of the Spirit is not something that we have to, we can bear on our own. We have to... We are the fruits of the Spirit, amen. We have to... To lead us, to help us, to live. So we are leaning on him, we are trusting. So I want us to take last song one more time. As you think on any aspect, any area of the fruit of the Spirit that you are, you really need his help with, and we sing it, we are leaning on him today. Let's go ahead and sing one more. Learning to lean, learning to lean. I'm learning to lean on Jesus. Finding more power than I've ever dreamed. I'm learning to lean on Jesus. Can we just whisper a prayer unto the Lord just to ask him to help us this afternoon, to help us this evening in whatever area we are lacking, whatever area of the fruit that needs to be built up, to grow in our lives, to be manifested and displayed, that others can see who Jesus Christ really is through us. We're asking the Lord to help us tonight. Help us, Lord God, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Whatever area we are lacking in, Father, if we need, Lord God, to improve on our love for others, O God, we pray that you will help us in the name of Jesus Christ. Help us, O God, to be more joyful. Help us, Lord God, to exercise more patience. Help us, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, to walk in long suffering, in the name of Jesus. Gentleness, meekness, O Father, we come before you tonight and we pray, O God, that we need your help. We need your help, Lord God, to bear the fruit of the Spirit at home, O God Almighty, at work, in our community, at church, mighty God, wherever we are. May we be a reflection of the Lord Jesus Christ. O Father, we commit everything in your hands. We confess our weaknesses in your hands. Some of us are struggling, O God, with resentment. Some of us may be struggling, O God, with unforgiveness. We may be struggling with the works of the flesh, O God. But we pray in the name of Jesus that you grant us victory over the works of the flesh and help us, O God, to bear the fruit of the Spirit where you are pleased, mighty God, with our actions, pleased with our attitudes, pleased, O God, with our motives in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, we pray that you give us a thirst, give us a hunger for the things of God. May we pursue you with a passion, in the name of Jesus. May we hunger and thirst after righteousness, knowing that we will be filled, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Father, we give you thanks. Jesus is... And we pray. And amen, hallelujah. So could I... Verses... There's a mic. Verse 22 to 23. "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, long-suffering, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control; against such there is no law." Amen, praise and hope. If all of us, but most familiarizing ourselves, memorizing Galatians, chapter 22 to 23, amen. So it speaks about the fruit of the Spirit and we have looked at about six of them already. So we have three more. And we want to wrap up this evening. I dare say that we're just touching on the surface of these particular areas of the fruit of the Spirit. So I would encourage persons to continue reading, amen. Continue reading on love. Do a word study on love, on joy, on peace, a word study to help us to be better able to bear the fruit of the Spirit, amen. So that is my encouragement to us. So the three fruit that is left, areas of fruit that is left of the Spirit is faith. Yes, what's the other one? Meekness, some Bible says meekness, some says gentleness. And of course, the third one, temperance or self-control. All right, wonderful. So we're looking at the fruit of faith, all right? And we are all familiar with the song. "Great is thy faithfulness, great is thy faithfulness." So God is faithful, amen. It's one of the attributes of our Lord God. Many of the fruit that are here, the attributes of the Lord God Almighty. And there are two areas or divisions when it comes to the attributes of God. You have the communicable attributes and you have the incommunicable attributes, right? So the... Are those... So God is faithful and expects us to be faithful, right? The Greek word "faithfulness" is P-I-S-T-I-F. Barclay defines it as fidelity, trustworthiness, reliability. Fidelity, trustworthiness, reliability, right? So those who are faithful will do what they promised to do, right? God is faithful, he's faithful to his promises, no doubt about it. Ask if you, if we should go back in time, if it was possible, and ask Abraham and Sarah, they could attest to the fact that God is faithful. He's faithful to his promises. In other words, he's trustworthy. You can trust his word. He is reliable, he is dependable. So when we talk about the fruit of the Spirit, the Lord is also expecting us to be reliable, to be dependable, to be people of our word, yes? When we say we are going to do something, we should carry it out. Person should not wonder or doubt our word, amen. So God is faithful. Corinthians, 1 Corinthians 1, verse 9. 1 Corinthians 1, verse 9. It says, "God is faithful by whom ye are called unto fellowship of his Son Jesus Christ." So God is faithful and the scriptures, the Bible has numerous scriptures that points to the fact that God is faithful and he expects us as well to be faithful in terms of bearing this particular fruit. 1 Corinthians 10, verse 13. It says, "God is faithful who will not suffer you to be tempted above that ye are able, but will what? With the temptation provide a way of escape." So we will face temptations. Is there anybody here, anybody who is online, you have never faced temptation? Let me see your hands, all of us. And temptation is not sin, yes? Temptation is not sin. Sin is when we yield to the temptation, right? But the scripture says that God is faithful who will not suffer us to be tempted above that which we are. He always makes a way of escape. So God is a faithful God. Let's look at 2 Thessalonians 3, verse 3. 2 Thessalonians 3, verse 3. And someone could read what it says. 2 Thessalonians 3, verse 3. Amen. "For the Lord is faithful who will establish you and keep you from evil." What are some synonyms used instead of faithful? Talk about faithfulness or being faithful. What other word comes to mind? Dependable, reliable, devoted, loyal. Right, right? So apart from God in the Bible, is there anyone we could identify from scripture that we could say this person was faithful, displayed faithfulness apart from God? Who? Job. Explain why you say Job. You could take a mic. Hold on, there's a mic. Use the mic for me. All right, so my brother is saying, apart from God in the Bible, Job displayed faithfulness.
Yes, based on what he was going through, all the different sickness, different disease, hunger and all of that, so he was still faithful to God. He didn't disobey.
He was faithful to God, he was still loyal to God, okay? Still committed, yes? Still devoted, are we agreeing? Was he still devoted to God? Was he still loyal to God? All right, anybody else? In scripture that you could say this person exhibited faithfulness? Paul, pastor said Paul, let's hear what pastor, our pastor would explain. Pastor said Paul, let's hear what pastor, our pastor would explain in terms of Paul's faithfulness.
The, all of what he went through in terms of carrying the good news, it would have been enough to make grown men cry. Snake bite him, them let him down, the city wall. He found abuse of one kind or another.
Yeah, yeah.
Flood repeatedly, in prison often.
Yes.
So, yeah, he, he, he was exemplary in, in being.
In his faithfulness. Amen. So he was, he was committed to God irrespective of what comes, be it persecution, as pastor said, beatings, termites, whatever the storm, he was committed to God, he was committed to ministry. Nothing was going to prevent Paul from doing the work of the Lord, amen? Committed to ministry. So talking about being loyal. So he, Paul would have exemplified a member perhaps of this church. I've been coming here for about four weeks now, and I've noticed the worship person, she's always here, here to worship, the person to set up the equipments to prepare us for our Bible study, always here, here on times, on times, reliable, dependable, amen? Trustworthy, loyal, dedicated to the ministry. And pastor, that is what we want. We want members who are loyal, members who are dedicated, members who are committed to the work of the Lord and to the ministry. And God is expecting us to do that. We want members in our ministry, those are part of the dance ministry, to be loyal and committed. So when we say rehearsal is four o'clock, we are not, at five o'clock, we are not wondering if they are gonna come or if they are gonna turn up, because they are loyal, committed, reliable and dependable, amen? And that is what the Lord is expecting of us. Ruth is another example. Ruth was loyal to Naomi. Yes, she says, when Naomi says, after they have lost her husband, lost her children, she said to Ruth and Orpah, I hope I pronounced it properly, she said to them, you know, "Go, go back to your, to your homeland, you know, go to your family, and I'll go to wherever I came from." And Ruth says, you know, "Wherever you go, I will go." Yes, "Wherever you lodge, I will lodge." Amen? And that's how it should be in marriage in a, wherever the husband and the wife should, or the husband should say, "I will go, wherever you lodge, I will lodge." Faithfulness, devotion, loyal, amen? God is expecting that of us. He's expecting us to be faithful. And this is a part of the, 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 the leadership requirements when it comes to ministry, as Paul exhorted Timothy in terms of leadership. When you're looking for leaders, look for leaders who are faithful, look for leaders who are committed, because we don't want to set a particular meeting, have a particular function, and persons don't turn up, or they turn up late, amen? Persons who are committed, persons who are loyal. Secondly, is the fruit of meekness or gentleness, as some Bible would have had it. And the Greek word is P-R-A-U-T-E-S. P-R-A-U-T-E-S. The, the, the fruit of meekness or gentleness. And we know gentle Jesus, meek and look upon. This little child, amen? So this is how Barclay describes meek, the Greek term, protest, right? He says, "It is temper that is always under complete control." Temper under complete control. Doctor Konstantinobis says, "It is unassuming in a spirit of mildness." That unassuming in a spirit of mildness and gentleness, which is the opposite of heartiness and harshness, the opposite of rudeness and abrasiveness, amen? So, so, so meekness is the willingness to waive one's right for the good, for a good cause. The willingness to waive one's right for a good cause. Think about Jesus Christ, he was meek, the willingness to waive one's right for a good cause, yes? He was meek. Who has today described as meek in scripture? Moses. Scripture says Moses was one of the meakest of all, right? Moses was one. Rena describes meekness or that particular fruit, meekness or gentleness. He says, "It is to remain in control of oneself in the face of insults and injury." To remain in control of yourself, for me to remain in control of myself in the face of insults and injuries, in the face of insults and injuries. So although an injurious situation may normally produce a rash, as Rena says, or an angry outburst, a meek person is in control. And control the situation by their gentleness and kind and mild attitude. Proverbs twelve sixteen says, "A fool shows his annoyance at once." A fool shows his annoyance at once, but a prudent man overlooks an insult. A fool shows his annoyance at once, but a prudent man overlooks an insult. Proverbs twelve, verse sixteen. So when we talk about meekness, yes, it is controlling ourselves in the face of insult and injury, yes? So a meek person, he says, depicts the attitude of one who is forbearing, patient, slow to respond, and one who remains in control in the face of insults. So if them tell you about your mother, you remain in control in the face of insults. If they tell you all kind of colorful words, you remain in control in the face of insults. Amen? I see a question. One method, okay, my brother says, one method to, to exercise meekness is to remind yourself that you have to love the brother or the sister the same way, irrespective of what comes out of their mouth, irrespective of what they do, remain in control in the face of insults, amen? And it's not an easy thing. It's not an easy thing, which is why we need the Holy Spirit, amen? We need the Holy Spirit to help us to, to exercise and to depict this kind of attitude, amen? The Bible speaks of David and Shemae in Second Samuel sixteen, verse five to thirteen. And Shemae, he hurled all kinds of insults against David and throw stones at him, and David maintained his composure. Talk about meekness, talk about remaining in control in the face of insults and injury. Has anybody ever faced that? Have you ever been in a situation where you are insulted? You, 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 persons speak against you. The Bible says, "We must bless those who curse us," right? They speak against you, and you just lose it. There was no meekness there, no gentleness, no mildness, there was harshness, rudeness that comes out of our mouth and our attitude. Can you remember that particular incident? But the Lord is calling us to come up higher, amen? The Lord is calling us to reflect the character and the attitude of the Lord Jesus Christ. He says we are to maintain our composure, amen? We are to maintain our composure. All right, so weakness is not meekness. Jesus Christ, when they hurled insults at him, right? He could have called ten thousand angels, he had the power to do it, right? But remember, I said as well, that meekness is the willingness to waive one's right for a good cause. The willingness to waive one's right. You have a right to, I won't say have a right to tell them off. You have a right, perhaps, to make your voice known sometimes, a right to defend yourself. But it's not every time we have to defend ourselves, you know? It's not every time we have to respond to an insult, yes? It's not each time somebody tells you about a family member in, in a derogative way, you are to open your mouth and defend it, right? It's not all the time. Sometime we have to waive our right for a good cause. Somebody else is watching, "Watch how the Christian going to behave now." So when person hurled insults at you, others are watching to see, what will you say? What will your actions be, right? But we waive our right for a good cause, amen? It's the opposite. Meekness is the opposite of rudeness and abrasiveness, amen? So I asked a question, as he asked, are you often the person contributing to a heated and potentially explosive atmosphere? Once you enter the room, there's an argument. Once you enter the place, the peace gone. Are, are we, let me say we, that type of person, when you enter the room, the atmosphere change from peacefulness to conflict and war? Or are we the meek ones, amen? Are we the gentle ones? The Lord is expecting that of us. So when others say or do something that would offend you or offend us, are we quick to respond harshly? Or do we control our emotions? Yes? Jesus Christ says in Matthew five, five, "Blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth." Amen? Titus three, verse two, Paul says, "To speak evil of no man, to be no brawlers, but gentle." And he's talking about leaders, gentle showing all meekness unto all men. And Galatians six, verse one, it says, "Brethren, brethren, if a man be overtaken in a fault, yes, ye which are spiritual, restore him." Right, in the spirit of meekness, right? So we're not going with heartiness as if we are bitter than the person, we are going in the spirit of meekness and gentleness, amen? Yes, the person have done wrong, and them were better, or we're going to correct them? Correct them, yes, but in the spirit of meekness and gentleness, because we want them to be restored, amen? Amen. And James one, verse twenty-two, it says, "Lay apart all filthiness." James one, twenty-two. Lay apart all filthiness, all naughtiness, and receive with meekness. Even this word that I'm, I'm sharing with us, we must receive it with meekness and not heartiness. We must receive it with meekness and gentleness, he says, "The engrafted word which is able to save your souls." The engrafted word which is able to save your souls. Moses was a meek man. He was meek, the scripture describes him. So when his brother and sister insulted him in terms of speaking badly about his marriage and badly about his wife, what kind of woman that him find to marry, right? And spoke badly about his wife and family, he did nothing about it. He didn't, he didn't respond, he was rude, he left it to God. And guess what? God came on the scene. God came on the scene and said, "Aaron, Miriam, Moses, I have summoned a meeting." Right, talking about meekness. So when we are meek, the Lord will defend us. So some of those insults, the same insults that Shemae spoke against David, right? The Lord dealt with it, as he dealt with Miriam and Aaron who spoke against his servant. They were brothers and sisters, hurling insults at their loved one, and the Lord stepped in. So we don't have to defend ourselves all the time. You have to leave, so leave it to the Lord, amen? And the scripture says, "At the end of the day, Miriam was struck with leprosy," right? And it was Moses who had to now pray and ask God to have mercy, yes, on her, and he, he did. So meekness is important. God wants us to, to, to walk, and we have to say, "Lord, help us." When they open their mouths at work, on the bus, wherever you are in the community, Lord, help us to be gentle and meek, not hearty and rude, yes? Yes. And our final one, the fruit of temperance or self-control. Temperance or self-control. And the Greek word is E-G-K-R-A-T-E-I-A. Won't try to pronounce that one. Right? And it speaks of the virtue, virtue of one who masters his desires, the virtue of one who masters his desires. For those who are familiar with Bruce Lee, you know Bruce Lee, the karate man? Right, right. He, he was a master in karate, right? Right? For those who know, all of us know Bolt, he was, he's a master when it comes to running the one hundred meter, right? So this particular Greek word that speaks of temperance and self-control is the virtue of one who masters his desires and passions, especially sensual appetites, all right? Adam Clark says, "Is exercising self-restraint, controlling our appetites, controlling our passions, controlling our desires." Amen? Amen. All right, so the scripture says in first Corinthians nine, twenty-seven, Paul says, "I discipline my body and keep it under subjection." One, 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 one version says, "I keep it under control. I discipline my body and bring it under subjection, keep it under control, lest afterwards, in preaching to others, I myself may fall away." Yes, first Corinthians nine, twenty-seven. So talking about temperance, exercising self-restraint, self-control, when it comes to P-A-D, passion, appetites and desires. Passion, appetite and desires, being able to control, control those, amen? Amen. So we say, what is the difference between meekness and temperance? Meekness has to do with our attitude, our attitude in the face of insult, injury. Temperance has to do with our appetites. So in meekness, we are controlling our attitude. In temperance, we are, it's, it's to control our appetites, passion, appetites and desires, amen? Amen. Joseph is like, is an example of one who exercises self-control and temperance. No doubt, I believe that Potiphar's wife was a beautiful woman in Genesis. Who says no? I believe she was a beautiful woman. I believe she was attractive, right? And the scripture says, when you read it, she, she was at him on a daily basis. It wasn't a one-time approach, you know? She was at him on a daily basis, and he had, no doubt, he had to restrain himself to keep saying, "No, no, no." Yes? So, so when we exercise temperance, we are controlling the passions or appetites and our desires, amen? This is what Paul says in first Timothy three, verse eight. When it comes to leadership, when it comes to selecting leaders, Paul says, "The leader or the deacon likewise must be men of dignity, not double-tongued, not addicted to much wine." Talking about temperance and self-control, amen? So it's not, a, a, a person, as a believer, should not overindulge when it comes to liquor, wine, beer, sorrel beer. You, you know what I'm talking about? Exercise self-control, so some person, they drink one, then they drink another, and another, and another, right? Exercise self-control during Christmas time, yes? A gluttony, yes, go ahead.
It's not only in beers, it is in food in general, because people can sometimes make gluttonous.
Yes, eat and eat, right? Even in terms of food, so appetites, passion, we have, some persons have a passion for food, some person, you know, some persons love food, it is a delight, it is a joy to sit around your dinner table and. you know, some persons love food, it is a delight, it is a joy to sit around your dinner table and eat your dinners, right? Every turd is thirty-two teeth. Every teeth must, the teeth, the food must touch every teeth, right? And when it got down, it feels good, you have some persons, they love, love food. So when it comes to exercising self-control, then some persons just, when it comes to pastry, they cannot pass the pastry shop. When it comes to KFC, every morning or every lunchtime, they have to, it is KFC, the, that, that, that desire, they have an appetite for that. You have some persons, they love ice cream. I remember talking to an elderly recently, she has diabetes, and her birthday was coming up, and she says, you know, I am making sure that I, I eat properly, everything is, is nice for the week, because when my birthday come, I'm going to eat all the ice cream. That I can eat, and eat and eat, but we must exercise self-control. Even though we love it, have to think about the health, the diabetes, right? Over-indulge, right? Um, you have some persons that love fruits, I love fruits. There are some foods that you love, that you just keep eating, 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 you will eat it for breakfast, lunch and dinner, yeah, for some persons, right? Um, but we must exercise self-control. So self-control, temperance, it talks about our appetites, appetites for food, appetite for drink, when it comes to, um, um, what other appetites do we have? Sexual appetites, right, we must be able to exercise self-control, right? You have some persons, they, they are not able to exercise self-control, so the, the wife or the husband can't fast, like that. What we must learn to exercise self-control, right? Even for a half day a day, exercise self-control, yes?
So self-control with passion. Um, some of us serving in the church have a passion for the service that we give to the church. Is it lack of self-control when you give so much that it drains you as a person? Is that lack of self-control? Is it that, alright, let me try and make it a lot clearer. So self-control is being able to control your passion, so for example, I have a passion to serve, and I keep serving everything that happens in the church that requires serving, I'm there upfront. But it's to a point where I'm neglecting my family, or I'm neglecting me as a person, isn't that lack of self-control?
Yes, lack of self-control, right, as, because also you have to remember the, the motives behind it too. What is the motive of, of doing these things? And whatever we do must be as unto the Lord and not unto man, right? So whatever we're doing, it must be pleasing to the Lord. Um, servicing ministry is good, but another area of our life is family life. Service in the home, right, so there must be a balance, which is where self-control comes in, right? Yes, any other question? Alright, so we were expected to exercise self-control. Daniel and the three Hebrew boys, they exercised self-control when it came to the food that was presented to them, right? And they knew it, right, that, that was not to be, um, they weren't to indulge in that, right? Um, they exercised self-control. Romans thirteen, fourteen, Paul says, and every man that strives for mastery is temperate in all things. Every man that strives for mastery, and I want to come back to our athletes, Bolt and Shelley and, and those persons, for them to master that which their, their giftings, they had to exercise self-control, right? Self-control in their eating habits, right? Self-control, um, perhaps in, in the? Up and about, right, self-control is important, right? So if we want to master something, right, we have to exercise temperance. Um, when it comes to, so how do we, let's ask the question now, how can we now bear the fruit, this, the fruit of the Spirit? What can we do to bear the fruit of the Spirit, to exercise temperance and self-control? So if you find that you're, you are out of control when it comes to certain things, sometimes persons, when they are depressed, they eat more. Yes, they just keep going to the fridge. Um, you find that you get up in the night and you start cook food late at night, right? If depressed, they just want stuff to eat, right? If it's not depression and you're even getting up to, to cook at one o'clock, two o'clock after you have had your dinner at eight, then that is lack of self-control, right? But you have persons, when you are going through a hard time, some persons eat more, um, they drink more, some persons, um, turn to the alcohol, right? Lack of self-control, right? But we must, we must, how can we know if you are having a weakness, a weakness when it comes to, a weakness when it comes to sex, sex as well, um, a weakness when it comes to in terms of things that we shouldn't watch, if you are pornography, right? Um, how can we move to a point of exercising self-control? What can we do? What can we do to overcome that lack of self-control in that area of our lives?
One of the things we can do is to have a, an accountability partner. Somebody will keep us accountable, that mean we must have somebody we can put, um, take into our confidence and say to the person, I'm having this challenge, help me pray through it, and when, and the person must be able, must be available to sometime talk to you, when you're, when you're going through distress. So you find a person you can speak to, and speak to that person. So if I am having a challenge, I know I could call my sister here, and say, I am having a challenge, help me pray through this, and sometimes she'd have maybe quite ring me through it, but basically should have eventually pray, you know?
Amen, amen, so have an, an accountability partner. Having an accountability partner, that is good. The, the, the first thing I want to also admit that you have the problem, right? That is very important, admit that you have the problem. So if it's a temper issue, admit it, if it's a food issue, you admit it, if it's an, an issue where you're, you're mean, you admit it, right? If it's a issue where there's no joy, right, you admit it. If it's an issue where in terms of faith, you're just not committed, not, just not devoted, um, not reliable. When you say that you're, when you give a promise, person take it lightly, because they know you're gonna, you're not gonna come true, right? So the first thing is to admit it, recognize the weakness. And then, of course, I believe the Word of God is very important, we must study the Word, right? Must study the Word, if you, if you have a particular weakness, find a scripture, ask the Lord for scriptures that will help you to overcome the weakness. If, since we're studying the, the fruit of the Spirit, if you find that you lack in temperance, find scriptures where temperance, um, that is related to temperance, and you study it and you meditate upon it. Look on examples in scripture of, 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 um, those who exercise temperance, right? And that is important, of, of those who did, those who didn't exercise temperance, there was a bad outcome, yes? For example, Tamar's brother, who did not exercise temperance, David's son, right? He had a passion for his sister, he, he, he had a desire for her, and he, he, he abused her because passion, oh, lack of self-control, yes? So look at the, 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 and the, the result was not a good one. So for the weaknesses that we have, for the things that we need to, to overcome, find scriptures that can help you, amen? So read the Word, study the Word, meditate on the Word, think of how it can apply to your life, get an understanding. As I said before, this what I'm doing, is just an overview, right? Pastor can do nine sermons on the, a, a sermon every week. Um, persons can preach on love for the whole year, right? So for you, you need to, after you have done the Bible study, you get your Bible and you read up some more scriptures on these, amen? To help you, to help us to bear the fruit of the Spirit. So the Word is important, and as well, of course, praying. Praying is important, pray and ask the Lord to help you. Sometime you're in a situation, and you know, for example, you know somebody who, who is very insulting, so you might be in their environment, just begin to whisper prayer, Lord, give me grace. Lord, help me to keep my composure, help me, Lord God, to hold my tongue. Lord, so you just start to pray, amen? Your work environment might not be a good environment, might be an environment where you're tempted to lose your cool. It might be an environment, you're, you're tempted to lose your patience, an environment when, um, you leave home feeling joyful, and as you enter the office, your face just drop. You feel sad, right? Ask the Lord, just whisper prayer, Lord, help me to bear the fruit of the Spirit. So the Word and prayer, and of course, my sister says, an accountability partner, amen? Somebody who you can talk to, um, who can hold you accountable, and don't forsake the assembly of the brethren. Sometime just come into church, you will hear a word, right, that will bless you and help you, right? You're struggling with something and just, you, you come and you get that particular word, you get the answer to what you are looking for. So those things are important to help us to the brethren. Explain? We should come to church, we should fellowship with the brothers and sisters, right? Fellowship, right, fellowship with the brothers and sisters in the Lord. Alright, so, so, so my brother asked, what, what does it mean in terms of not forsaking the assembly of the Lord? And I'm saying, in short, just to come to church, um, fellowship with the brothers and sisters in the Lord. Fellowship is important, amen? Iron sharpeneth iron, iron sharpeneth iron. So I encourage each and every one of us, all of us have an area of the fruit to build upon, to, to develop, right? Let us start focusing on what areas we need to develop and work on it, amen? Work on it so that this time next year, what, if you used to lose your cool, this time next year, you are calm, cool and collective, amen? Amen, if you, if, 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 in terms of patience and long suffering, perhaps you are short-tempered, this time next year, it will be different, amen? You are long-tempered, slow to get angry. So the fruit of the Spirit, love, joy, peace, long suffering, patience, gentleness, meekness, goodness, faith, temperance, all of those, amen, are what? Against which there is no law, amen? Amen, bless the, bless the name of the Lord. I now hand over to to, to, to pastor. Thank you again for having me, and, um, God bless you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Gibbs. Thank you. Yes, yes. It, there, there is no limit. Jesus, we must forgive, not just seven times seven, seventy times seven. And when, when Paul tells us that against which there is no law, nobody can force you to go against doing. And people will, people will quarrel and carry on and tell you that you're, you're, you're too soft and all kinds of things. Eh? Hello? Yeah, against which, against such, there is no law. Nobody can tell you, don't be kind, don't be patient, don't be long-suffering, eh? Anybody who won't tell you that, must tell you why them want you to be contrary to what the fruit of the Spirit is producing, eh? Come again? Yeah, man, if, if them telling you, don't do it, you must ask them why. Eh, if, 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 if you are, if you are in a situation where, where you feel led, exercised by the Spirit of God to act a particular way, you won't forgive account to him as to why you don't do it. People, them say me, me, me must load them up. Call them out. Hmm, you have to remember now the exercise of what, what the Spirit of the Lord, I tell you to do. Because it's not you may accountable to, it's him, alright? I, I like that story of, of Shimei and David, because David have his men on the right, and his men on the left, and this man across the road, a, a close him. Him, if David a king, you know? A man come to David and said, you want me to cut off the head of this dead dog? You know what David say? Don't trouble him, him could not curse me unless God allow him. Eh? When, when Jesus stood before Pilate and, and the high priest and all of them, Bible says, he opened not his mouth. Let's stand. Eh? Yep? Father, what will we do without you? You have entrusted to us, you have reminded us through your servant what resembling you, what representing you in the world looks like. We confess before you this evening that without you, we can do nothing. We admit, Lord God, that very often this is why we spend more time asking you for things, rather than asking you to help us to be what you want us to be. Great God, by your grace and mercy, would you fix it in our hearts this evening and going forward that we take a different view of life's priorities for us as Christians? Your Word says that as you were, as you are in the world, so are we. And, and, and we have, we have a difficulty with that, we can't do it by ourselves. We start off with good intentions, and then one little provocation a mile up the road, and it's a different thing. Lord God, help us tonight, help us tonight, and as we have been reminded, help us to admit it, acknowledge that we have the problem, find help in our communion with you, reading your Word, praying, and God lead us, we pray, to somebody who will hold us accountable. And again, we hear, iron sharpens iron. Two can't walk together unless they are agreed. We want, Lord God, to find by your help, somebody who will agree with us that holiness is what we long for. Oh God, hear our prayer tonight. And we pray, Lord God, your continued anointing, enablement upon Reverend Gibbs. Put your head round her, Lord, cause the, the, the beauty of Jesus to be seen in her more and more. Oh God, hear our prayer, we ask you. We thank you for the privilege of being able to give back to you out of what you have blessed us with. out of what you have blessed us with. Receive it, Lord, we pray. Use it for the cause of your kingdom here on earth. We ask now that as we part, your head might be around us. We would walk hungry for more of you. Grant us the sweet sleep of the righteous as we lay down tonight. In Jesus' name. Amen? God bless you.